I will now call the October 7, 2013 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. We will stand, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you into Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Welcome, those in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV 7 to tonight's City Council meeting. The next item is the consent agenda, and we missed by seven going through the whole alphabet on the consent agenda tonight. That being said, I would accept a mo-- oh, we need to pull item N. Councilman Levy wants us to pull item N. Are there any others that need to be pulled? If not, I will accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Carrie unanimously with Councilman Corbell absent.
Councilman Levy.
Thank your honor. Item N has to do with the KC ATA, the Kansas City Area Development, or Kansas City Area Transportation Authority contract with the bus service that's provided for commuting from Blue Springs here to downtown. This is a contract that has continued to rise several thousands of dollars annually as we've gone through for several years now. So I have touched base with staff a couple of times about considering options where this is concerned. I don't know that we've ever explored any alternatives to the KCATA service. This may be the most efficient way to provide that service, but I think it's at least worth maybe giving some direction to staff, any discussion that the council members may have to kind of give them an idea of an area they can explore. So I thought this would be an opportunity to bring that up.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, your honor. I'd second that. I'd be, if investments could go up, revenues could go up as fast as the KCAT subsidy, it would be in a whole lot better shape. This thing has grown, I don't know, from 20,000 to over 100,000, and it just seems like a few years, so I'll let staff.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, your honor, and yeah, I did talk to Councilman Levy late this afternoon, and we do have a representative from KCATA here in our audience tonight, Danny O'Connor, who's been very helpful in working with staff throughout the years and putting this contract together and attempting to manage the growth that you've seen in this budget over the time. I don't remember what the exact number was when we did start, but Councilman Fowler, you're right, we have, it has grown substantially, and it seems like every year when we work with KCATA, they do a very good job of trying to put together federal grants and programs and rider fees that will help minimize exposure to the city. In fact, the council information form outlines the actual cost to provide this service is approximately $455,000 annually, and that cost breaks down. 238,000 is offset by state and federal grants. 113,000 comes from user fees, which is based upon a $3 fee, which goes, it's $3 each way, and that leaves the city with 104,000 in this contract. I was made aware today that the Mid-America Regional Council has recently formed a transit committee, and although Blue Springs has not been officially asked to be part of that committee, I will be reaching out to David Warham, the director of MARK tomorrow, to learn more about this, because it's my understanding that this initiative is specifically designed and targeted to help the metro suburb areas manage the growth in commuter bus traffic. So I'll report back to the council on what that activity might look like, and certainly we will visit with KCADA, or KCATA representatives, and we'll explore every way that we can minimize and manage the costs in this.
I don't know if Dana can answer this question or not, but I know at one point we benefited from Lee Summit having some grants that typically we would not have because somehow geographically they're separate. Yeah, can you come up for a minute to explain that? That I think those, that those funds dry up, they're no longer getting them, that we were able to benefit from in the past, that I think it helped kept our costs down?
Certainly. So, good evening, I'm Danny O'Connor, Director of Planning KCATA. Thank you for having us here, and we really appreciate the continued partnership, really building the transit network in greater Kansas City and Blue Springs' long partnership with that. You asked about the federal funding and the grants that are part of that 238,000 that Eric mentioned. Yes, part of the funding is that there's an urban, Lee Summit became its own urbanized area, and with that, there was additional federal funding that's been applied to help offset the costs of this service with it being Eastern Jackson County. One of the challenges that we're facing is that ATA and Blue Springs, three or four years ago, applied for an STP grant at MARK, and that was a $250,000 grant that came. It helped us offset the cost of this service for the last three or four years. That's one that we see a window, the window's closing on it, and you know, we're having those discussions with staff as far as how to navigate going forward, so.
Well, I serve on the toll transportation and policy committee, so let me know how I can help navigate that.
That would be great. Thank you, yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Again, thank you for coming out tonight to explain this.
Thank you.
That being said, I will accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries. Next, that brings us to second page, introduction and reading of Bill 4274.
I introduce it, your honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4274, an ordinance annexing real estate to the city of Blue Springs.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4274, an ordinance annexing real estate to the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and sign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Carrie, giving you an ordinance Number 4453.
Next, we have a public hearing rezoning Blue Springs Christian Church.
Your honor, for a public hearing, RZ 8134069, I'd like to introduce one exhibit which includes city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, August 24, 2013, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, and copy of letter sent to the property owners, and these are all the exhibits they have to offer on behalf of the city.
Okay, Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city?
Thank you, your honor, members of the council. Again, before this meeting is request for the property that was just formally annexed in the city to be rezoned from county agricultural zoning to city of Blue Springs General Business GB zoning, and the purpose of doing so is in order to access and connect to the city's sanitary sewer system. So therefore, they have gone through the annexation process. The rezoning went to Planning Commission back on September 9th. Planning Commission did recommend approval, asked submitted to you this evening in a vote of 10 to 0, and the same with the final plat, which is also before you following this agenda item. So with that, again, pretty straightforward in terms of the reason for the request and the zoning category that they're looking to move to, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Allen, from council? Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant? The applicant is coming forward.
Matt Slish, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. I don't have much to add, appreciate the time tonight. Blue Springs Christian Church just happened to be part of the city, and they're just kind of working through the process to take themselves off a septic sewer and get onto a gravity sewer system, so. Here for any questions, and there's a couple members from the board here as well.
Any questions? Matt, thank you. Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of, in support of, in opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4275, rezoning to Blue Springs Christian Church property.
I'll introduce it, your honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4275, an ordinance rezoning property from AG County Agriculture to GB General Business.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Yeah, good to see the Blue Springs Christian Church joining Blue Springs after all these years. I know when they developed down there and they stayed in the county, that was always, you know, kind of a question as to why that occurred the way that it did, but good to see a neighbor joining our community and willing to step up and be part of it, pay taxes and connect on to the city sewer system and water.
I second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4275, an ordinance rezoning property from AG County Agriculture to GB General Business.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and sign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carrie, giving you an ordinance Number 4454.
Next, we have an introduction and reading of Bill 4276, approving the final plat of Blue Springs Christian Church.
I'll introduce, your honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4276, an ordinance approving final plat for Blue Springs Christian Church, first plat, city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4276, an ordinance approving final plat for Blue Springs Christian Church, first plat, city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and sign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Carrie unanimously giving you 4455.
Before Chris Tatham comes with good news, as he always does, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, your honor, and Chris Tatham with ETC is going to make a presentation to our city council tonight. I believe the only councilman currently sitting on this council here in 2002 was Councilman Fowler, and in 2002, the city initiated and went through a process of conducting a survey specifically targeted to the development community. For some time leading up to 2002, we had received considerable feedback from some of our community and business stakeholders who specifically touched our development process in a number of areas, and at that time, the city administrator Fred Sims, in conjunction with planning staff from the planning department, public works, and administration, decided we needed to get our arms around some of the perceptions or some of the things that were occurring in the community, and so we did a survey. We engaged ETC Institute to conduct that survey, and Chris tonight will share with you that what we discovered and found out in 2002 is that sometimes when you ask your customers what they're experiencing, you might not like what you ask for. You might actually get it. And what we discovered is that there were many specific areas within this organization where we needed to improve how we were delivering services to our business community and to our development processes. And over the last 10 years, with the support of the city council, we have invested in technology, we have invested in training, the leadership of this organization through appointments to various boards and commissions and the interaction with the council and retreats and strategic planning between our city council and our comp plan processes, all of the things that touch our development processes have resulted in a much better product today. And so tonight, I think you're going to hear Chris talk about who we've surveyed, why we've surveyed them, and see tonight just how we're trying to be responsive to your priority, and that is to, one, make certain people know Blue Springs is open for business, and then when they come to Blue Springs, are we embracing those processes, and are we doing what we need to be doing from a policy and from a customer service standpoint to deliver the best development product? So with that setup, I'll turn it over to Chris Tatham.
Any questions? No. It's great to be back, and you know, I guess having been doing this for you for so many years, you know that when it's not good, I tell you, it's not good. When it is good, you can have confidence it is, and tonight's results are amazingly good. When I was here a little over 10 years ago presenting them, it wasn't as positive news, so it's great to be back a decade later. As the city administrator set up, really this is to give you an objective assessment of how well your processes are serving the needs of your development community, and obviously have to balance their needs with the needs of residents and other things, so you want to make sure you have a good service, a good process in place, but at the same time, you don't want to hurt the needs of the residents. So we went to survey together, there were about 60 developers who had had contact with the city sometime in the last two years, and so all of them were contacted by mail, phone, email, as many different ways as we could use to reach them. We actually reached 27 of them. About 12 to 13 of them were no longer around or doing that kind of work, so we had a little over half of the people out there actually participate. And what I find with these surveys is when you have small samples, the people who don't like your process are usually the ones who respond first. So typically with these kinds of surveys, if anything, they tend to be more negative because the people think you're doing things right, they're busy, they just go on with their lives. So getting 27 out of probably about 50 to respond is a good sample, and I think you can be very confident that at worst, these are as low as your results would be. And that said, we learned a little bit about the types, we wanted to make sure we had all different types of folks represented. We had people who identified themselves as developers, owners, contractors, architects, engineers, and various other groups, so we wanted to make sure that all types of people who you interact with were represented. Most of the people we talked to had more than 20 interactions with you during the last couple of years, so these people are regular customers and doing a lot of development in the community. And you can see most of the types were either new commercial or new home construction. Some people were doing both, which is why they add up to more than 100%, and we have a wide variety when it comes to the size of projects. In other words, we have small contractors and big contractors. There's a reason we did that, is that at the end of the day, does our sample really reflect the diversity of the development community here? And I believe when you look at the data, it really does. So with that, wanted to find out what they thought about the quality of service they received. And first thing we did is we had them rate a number of attributes about the planning and development staff on a scale of 1 to 5, and they essentially agreed or disagreed with these statements. You'll notice on here that pretty much the entire chart is in blue, and I won't read everything to you, but blue is good, much like the Direction Finder, it means it gave you positive ratings, and you'll see, in fact, of all the people that were surveyed, only a couple had any negative things to say about your planning and development process. Overall, when you look at the perception of courtesy of staff, staff treated adequately trained, inspectors available when needed, all of those things rated very, very highly, and you have a lot of people in development community giving you that 5 on a 5-point scale, which shows a lot of brand equity, that they feel real good about your process. What's more impressive, though, is when you look at these same questions compared to the results back in 2002. Notice the percent change in the positive ratings on the right. I won't read them all to you, but look at some of these things have gone up 60, 60, 59%. It's a complete transformation of your development review process. I mean, you've gone from really being probably perceived to be one of the worst organizations around to being perceived as one of the best organizations around over the last 10 years, and I won't read all that. Normally, I'd say there's a significant improvement, but every single one of those, the smallest increase is 25.7%, just phenomenal. And the same thing, we looked at your codes administration staff, I won't read all of these to you, but you can see the real theme here is, in this case, almost half the people we surveyed gave ratings of 5, really showing that they feel real strongly. There are a few people who are dissatisfied, but they're in the 1s and 2, very minimal percentages, those are probably the ones you hear from, so putting that into perspective. Again, when you look at the changes from 2002 to 2013, you can see double digits across the board. The only place was you had high ratings last time for courtesy of staff at 66.7, that only went up 8.3, but you're not going to get a lot better than where you're at anyway. But bottom line, you can see the same sort of double-digit improvements, and in some cases, up almost 40% or more. When it comes to perceptions of public works, utilities, and engineering staff, an interesting distribution here, I actually had to double-check the data, the numbers are right, we just had a lot of people pretty much across the board feel really good. When you have a small sample, we had people feel 5s all the way down, 4s all the way down, and then a couple people gave some of the lower ratings. But all in all, feel very good about your public works, engineering, and utility staff. And again, you'll see the same sort of thing, double-digit improvements in pretty much every area. They were rated relatively high last time, this was sort of the strength, this was what we showed out. Now you have, in many cases, 100% of the people surveying giving positive ratings in many areas. The other thing that's changed is the perceptions of some of your organizations. You'll see the city council, really only about 1%, one person responded was negative toward the 27. If you're putting this into perspective, what these numbers mean, everybody felt the Appearance Review Committee was doing good, only one person gave negative ratings for the Planning Commission, and just 2 on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So all in all, your development community feel pretty good about the different groups they work with. And take a look at the trends here, this is phenomenal. City council, less than 1 in 5 persons in the development community had positive ratings in 2002, 88.3 did this time. It went up almost 70% in the last decade. You are completely a different organization today than you were 10 years ago, at least from the development community's perspective. You can see both the other areas also increased over 50%. That's just complete transformation. When we look at the overall satisfaction with the length of time it takes to get a project approved in Blue Springs compared to similar communities, you can see most are satisfied or very satisfied. You can see that there's about, for every person who was dissatisfied, 18%, you've got about 3 or 4 who are actually giving you positive ratings. And this is one that's an issue everywhere I do these surveys, everybody wants it faster, but comparatively, these look very, very positive. When you look at how things have changed from last time, last time, only 12.2% of the people we surveyed said they were satisfied or very satisfied. This time, you've got 62.9%. If you combine that over the right side, you see the overall positive ratings are up 50% as far as the length of time. So not only do people feel better about each of the entities, feel better about your processes, they feel better about the time that it takes to get things done as well. When it comes to the building and development standards processes, you can see, again, very similar types of positive ratings across the board. The majority of people were satisfied with all the items that were assessed, and when we looked at how people's experience was going to impact their decision to do more development in Blue Springs, you can see by a 3 to 1 ratio, as a result of their experience with the city staff and the city processes, they're more likely to do it than they're unlikely to do it. You know, a lot of folks said it really doesn't impact them at the end of the day, but your processes are certainly having a positive impact on people's desire to come back and do more in the future. And take a look at this, more likely to do business with Blue Springs, only 6%. That was basically 1 person last time said they'd want to come back and do more, now it's up to almost 30%, and you can see that overall, the percent that was less likely to do business, you're basically running people away from the city. 2 out of 3 said as a result of working with the city, they were less likely to do business with you in the future. Now that's down to just 11%. So again, every category we looked at seems to be moving in the right direction. Things that were important, online submittal, interactive maps, online planning submittal, and online application tracking, those were 4 of the things that kind of stood out, but you'll notice there's not a lot, a lot of people just didn't pick anything. You know, they thought you were fine, so we gave people a choice, they could pick up to 4 items. A lot of folks just didn't select any, which is why these percentages are relatively low compared to some of the things you probably see in other cases. And then as far as agreement with various standards related to the development review process, things like the city cares about its customers, city's improved service in the last 2 years, city does its best to fix mistakes, just these kind of characteristics that you hope you convey when you interact with a customer, your development community, which sometimes are the most difficult people to deal with because they expect a lot, they work with lots of different organizations, and I've seen, done these surveys for probably 30 organizations across the country in the last 10 years, and these are not easy ratings to get. They expect a lot, and they don't typically look at government as customer-friendly, so when you see 70% or more of your development community thinking you're customer-friendly, you're definitely doing something right. At the end of the day, we asked people to compare your process to other communities where they'd worked, didn't have a lot who had done Grandview, that one person there said it was about the same. Grain Valley had 6 people who had worked with Grain Valley and also with you, and you can see it's the only one where they actually thought you were worse than Grain Valley. But compared to most of your major competitors, Kansas City, Gladstone, Independence, Liberty, Lee Summit, and even Raytown, if you look at the percentage that picked you better or much better, you're definitely setting the standard compared to others who you're interacting, who your developers are interacting with. So with that, I guess the bottom line, great job. I told the city administrator right before this meeting that when we go out to other communities who are having problems, we'll probably tell them to call you, figure out what you did over the last decade, because this kind of transformation is something I don't think I've really seen anywhere. To go, see the ratings for a council go up 70%, pretty phenomenal. So anyway, congratulations, I don't know if anyone has any questions, but you're definitely doing things right from your development review process.
Any questions or comments from Chris? Councilman Fowler? Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. Councilman Corper?
Thank you. I was just going to say that I think we owe a lot of kudos to our staff. I was planning commissioner for 21 years, I have seen a lot of changes and a lot of changes in attitude as the builders and developers have come before the city with their different projects, and I have seen a lot of effort on the part of staff of the city of Blue Springs to make sure that we have answered their cries and felt some of their pain and done what we could do to help them, so my hat's off.
Councilman Fowler? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I echo what Councilman Culpepper said. When I ran in 2009, just to tell you how quickly some of this has turned around, one of the main reasons I ran was because a lot of my friends in the business community said, you can't do business in Blue Springs. There was still a struggle going on here, but you can see from this survey that, you know, in the last 4 years, that has turned around, and I give a lot of credit to Mr. Johnson, the mayor, I mean, this is a can-do team, and we've created a can-do atmosphere here, and we're not resting on our laurels either. We're currently going through a review of the Unified Development Code, we're going through a review of the Comprehensive Plan, because these numbers are great, I was blown away when I saw it the first time, but it can be better.
Councilman Fowler?
Yes, your honor. Good to hear, we can always improve, that's a great motto. I too want to second everything that Administrator Johnson said and my colleagues, staff has worked diligently to make, to change this process and to get a better perception. There's one other milestone I want to touch on, though. You mentioned a lot of our developers are now gone, and that is true. We actually had people that set up websites to talk about us, so that's the level it got to. We're missing some good names, you know, that probably are not on the survey this time, with the Tom Williams, Sean Tabby, Steve Gill of the House, the Parkers are out there, and also Ted Anderson. I think a milestone that helped change this around, not only staff, but in 2008, the mayor tried to cover that gap, and he assigned Ted Anderson to the Planning Commission, and although that was very short-lived, I appreciate the mayor for reaching out and trying to change the culture, so, thank you, your honor.
Thank you. And I might also add that staff has not only worked within, but externally with the EDC, we have former Councilman Al Shaper back there, I know he's worked very hard with Deputy City Administrator Todd Pelham and Scott Allen on business processes, so everybody coming together, working as a community, I think is what's changed those numbers, and certainly, I'm not one to rest on my laurels, I'm one that thinks that we need to stay on the move. And so I appreciate you coming and bringing that positive information, and next time, we expect to be even great.
Good comment, your honor. And one more thing, I think Councilman Edmondson was, his first tour of duty on the council was back in 2002, so he was back here to remember some of those times. Yeah.
Thank you, your honor, and Councilman, for all your comments, and I want to personally say thank you to my team that I have here, and Scott Allen, Jim Holly, Chris Sandy, Todd Pelham, and Norman Gurney, and all of the people in this organization who, one, were willing to accept the challenge that they received back in 2002 when we said, this isn't acceptable, and we're going to change it. And then to have a council that's willing to embrace it as well and to give staff leadership and guidance on areas, because if you know, if you look over a 10-year period, there's a lot that this community and the leadership of this community has taken on and has addressed. We appreciate your investment in the surveys, we're not going to wait 10 years to do another one. In fact, I told Chris tonight, you know, we have really integrated the citizen survey
In fact, I told Chris tonight, you know, we have really integrated the citizen survey into what we do now, and it's part of our culture, and it's part of how we work with the city council to develop community priorities and then direct and allocate funds to that. My plan would be that we start doing this at least every two years and that we're tracking it very closely because we do want to continuously improve and we want to get better, and my goal to our staff is that we're leading the metropolitan area in this particular area. So, Chris, thank you for the talk.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, that concludes the discussion on the survey. That brings us to introduction and ring of Bill number forty-two seventy-seven. I'll introduce it, Your Honor. Okay.
First reading of Bill number forty-two seventy-seven, an ordinance amending the property maintenance code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri by adding section five-one-five point five-one-five to require swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs to be properly maintained and to include the failure to do so as a nuisance under certain circumstances.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Culpepper and I have seen firsthand evidence of this, that this needs to go forward, and for the residents who have tried to get something done on this and couldn't because we didn't have the proper ordinance in effect, I appreciate their patience with us and the city council, and look forward to this being approved and staff following up.
Any further comments, Councilman?
Yes, Your Honor. This has really been going on for a while with several residents, and as Councilman Fowler said, this is, they've been very, very patient. Part of the concern is that it's a health issue, and so it's something that we all felt needed to be addressed right away, and I appreciate staff jumping on it, too, because that was, it was important to get it done as quick as possible.
Any other comments? Thank our city attorney for putting the language together to bring it to us tonight. No other comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of Bill number forty-two seventy-seven, an ordinance amending the property maintenance code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri by adding section five-one-five point five-one-five to require swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs to be properly maintained and to include the failure to do so as a nuisance under certain circumstances.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Lethy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Carrie giving you an ordinance number forty-four fifty-six.
Okay, next we have introduction and reading of Bill forty-two seventy-eight.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill number forty-two seventy-eight, an ordinance amending section two-four-five two-five-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri to address the obstruction of both street gutters and drainage swells.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of Bill number forty-two seventy-eight, an ordinance amending section two-four-five two-five-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri to address the obstruction of both street gutters and drainage swells.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Lethy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Carrie giving you an ordinance number forty-four fifty-seven.
That brings us to merril announcements. I don't know if all of you noticed or not, but early Thursday morning, the First Lady, Big Red, and I left Fortlanta, drove twelve hours, got to Atlanta in time to watch the grandson play football. They won. Spent two days, and he had another game Saturday. They won. Early Sunday morning, First Lady Big Red and I headed back home, twelve hours. So there was a thing tonight that the city administrator and the city clerk, if the case I started to doze off tonight, they were going to make sure I awakened. But anyway, I'm not too tired, so I'm in pretty good shape. But anyway, and that's just family is important, and I guess, yeah, a little nudging over here. The plan was in place, it didn't have to be used, but that's just, the significance of what I'm saying is family is important, to be able to go and watch the grandson play, play football and win.
Your Honor, if I could jump in here just a minute.
Yes.
We just recently had National Night Out, and you attended, and you talking about families, and that kind of brought it back to mind. I thought we had excellent attendance. I think we owe a great big thank you to the police department for the outstanding organization that they put that on with. Looked like a very good crowd. I'm not sure what the estimate, but I would say three thousand to thirty-five hundred people were there, and I'm not sure who came up with the idea, but we also had our brand-new patrol cars on display, and where I was at during that event was right next to those, and it was amazing, and the people that were commenting on how good they looked, what they had, the new equipment in them, they were very impressed with those patrol cars, and I think that was a wonderful opportunity to do a positive impact in the community with the police department in a situation where normally a patrol car is usually showing up at your house for maybe the wrong reason or pulling you over for the, you know, probably the right reason, but it's not the opportunity that you want to see a patrol car. And so anytime I think we get the opportunity to go out into the neighborhood with these vehicles and set them up and actually show the other side of our police department, we need to take advantage of it, and I think they did a really good job on National Night Out. Councilman Carter was there and also did a very good job.
I would second that.
You didn't say what you were doing next to the police cars, but I know you were cooking hot dogs, and how many hot dogs did you cook up and serve?
Approximately twelve hundred and fifty hot dogs we did.
Twelve hundred and fifty hot dogs. I was blessed to have one of them.
Any other comments before we finish up the merril announcements?
Well, we're going to go to Thost Dependent, and we all get a bunch of junk mail, and you normally put it in file thirteen, but every now and then, there's a keeper in your junk mail, and I got this, and it says, "Dream bookmark," and so I keep bookmarks, and it has a picture of a little baby with the book open and some big glasses on. He's very studious, and the quote is, "Every great dream begins with a dreamer. Always remember, you have within you the strength, the patience, and the passion to reach for the stars to change the world." Anybody knows who the quote comes from?
Casey Kasem?
No. Little bit before Casey Kasem. Harriet Tubman.
That concludes the Thost Dependent for the evening, and that brings us to visitors, and I don't have any visitors' appearance forms, so that being said, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
You're a little reluctant, seconding. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? We adjourn.